Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I respectfully call the November 6, 2017 O'Clare Area School District School Board Meeting to order. I will try to use very few words tonight so we can, so I can let everybody know that I'm very aware that there's a favorite team playing Monday Night Football. Okay? So, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We never look at football schedules for school board meetings, but maybe we should. Patty, are we in compliance with the open meetings law notification?
Yes, we are.
Thank you for always doing that for us. Roll call for verification of a quorum, please.
Commissioner Dux.
Here.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Harder.
Here.
Commissioner Luganville.
Here.
Commissioner Boo.
Here.
Commissioner Torres. And Commissioner Becca.
Here.
Thank you, everyone. I don't know if, did we have anyone sign up? No one for public forums, so well, that takes us right on to our superintendent's report. Yeah, well, Dr. Hardbeck.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the upcoming Board of Education events. Starting on November 7, which is tomorrow, at 7:00 PM, we will have a parent advisory committee meeting. November 8, at 11:30 AM, we will have a budget development committee meeting, and both of those meetings will take place in the administration building. That will be followed on the November 14, at 4:00 PM, with a meeting of the LEAP Committee, which will take place in the administration building. And that's followed on November 16 by a meeting of the Demographic Trends and Facilities Planning Committee, which will take place at 4:30. And then our next board meeting and Policy and Governance meeting are on November 20. So, tonight, we have Boy Scout Troop 30 with us as they work to earn one of their badges, so I'm going to ask the members of that troop to please stand up and be recognized. We're glad, we're glad to see you here. I will tell you that typically when we have visitors from the Boy Scouts, they don't make it quite the whole meeting, so if you have to leave because you have schoolwork or something, we understand, but we're really glad you're here tonight. Thank you. I'd also like to recognize the following student athletes who recently earned academic All-State honors from the Golf Coaches Association of Wisconsin. North students include Tiana Martin. Is Tiana here? None of them are here? Oh, okay. Sidney Brown, Haley Cronin, and Allison Braumer. And Memorial students include Matty Logan, Rebecca Gary, Nicole Larson, Lexie Mead, and Kaitlin Mongerson. Those students are nominated by their member coaches, and they must have at least a 3.25 GPA, play in 75% of their teams' matches, and be a sophomore or older at the school. So, this is, this is, it's a nice honor for these students, and we want to congratulate them. And then, I want to remind the board that the chamber will hold an eggs and issues on Friday, and this, I guess, speaker is, I mean, a week from Friday, thank you. A week from Friday. And the guest speaker will be Todd Barry, and he's always a big hit, and Abby's going, "Oh, money, money, money." So, you know, if you would like to attend, please let Patty know.
Thank you, Dr. Hardbeck. It's my turn now for the president's report. Boy Scouts, I need you to know that if, we have a quorum, we have a seven-member board. Do you know what a quorum is? So, if we didn't have a quorum, which means more than half the boards, we need four people for a quorum, then we could not hold a meeting. So, that's why every meeting, we have to decide and have a roll call. So, Patty, make sure that we have a quorum, otherwise, we could not meet. So, I wanted you to know that, okay? My president's report, I'll go on to that now. We had an honor given to one of our school board members. I wanted the board to know. Joe recently, at the state meeting of the Wisconsin Art Education Association, received the Distinguished Service Award, so congratulations, Joe. He's really participated in a lot of that and supported that. I also dug in today a little bit with the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Convention in January. I wanted to kind of get in there and kind of look at what some of the things that they were offering that would apply to some of the focus areas that we've been working on. And it does, the convention is Wednesday, January 17, Thursday, January 18, and Friday, January 19 till noon, so that's kind of how it works. But there's a pre-convention workshops on Tuesday, November 16, and Patty, are we, are there rooms there for the night of Tues? So, and it's not till the afternoon to 5:00. It includes an overview of an integrated comprehensive system for, for school board members on equity. ECS Equity, I found that interesting, provides a four cornerstone framework and process to eliminate inequities in K-12 schools and post-secondary institution. The workshop will be participatory in nature and include an overview of the steps to equity for all students across race, ethnicity, social class, ability, gender, sexual gender identity, and their intersections within the four ICS cornerstones. It looked interesting. So, that's being offered Tuesday afternoon by Dr. Elise Fraturo, School of Education in Milwaukee, and Dr. Colleen Capper from the Department of Educational Leadership and Policy Analysis from UW-Madison. That, so I want to... Yeah. It's Tuesday, and it is, I wrote it down here, from 12:00 noon to 5:00. So, it's an afternoon pre-conference, okay? And I really would like to go to that, so... Yeah, and so, registering is Patty, and is ASAP. She does have rooms, but we'll let them go if people aren't going, okay? We'll probably, I mean, if I go down on that day, people can ride with me, or you can, you know, interface in and out, okay? The other thing on here is I wanted to also thank our staff profusely for what has been, I keep getting invites, and what is being offered for Veterans Day. I'm going to try to get as many things as I can on that Friday. But Saturday is the presentation at North Star. I think it's at 10:10, which is synonymous with the Veterans Day and the start of, or start of the end of the war. So, thank you for that. And then, that concludes my president's report. So, that takes us on to our student representative reports. Hi, Lauren. Hi, Ryan. Who's going first tonight? Okay. Boy Scouts, we have student representatives on the school board, in case you feel so inclined someday. Lauren is from, Lauren and Ryan are from our high schools, and they sit on the school board with us. So, Lauren, are you first tonight?
Yep.
Okay. Go take it away.
All right. Good evening. Not a lot to talk about tonight, but in terms of sports, as I mentioned last meeting, there was state cross-country, and our boys took 14th with several academic All-State student athletes. Girls Swim and Dive had sectionals this last weekend, and divers from Memorial took first and second at sectionals, and so, they will be going down to Madison this coming Saturday for the state meet. This last weekend, the Memorial Jazz One Band traveled to Appleton to play in front of a panel of judges and just to receive feedback. And the Memorial Show Choir had a performance in Chippewa. And then, the Memorial StuCo passed a grant, Student Council passed a grant for our special education classes, to purchase some PDF materials. That'll be available building-wide at Memorial for all the special education classes to benefit from. And then, Memorial National Honor Society and Student Council are working together to have a toy drive at Memorial to help support the cross-country Christmas being organized by Trinity Equestrian, which is sending toys and Christmas gifts down for hurricane relief. So, yeah, that's what's up with us.
Thanks, Lauren. Ryan?
Good evening. I'm going to give you guys a quick update on a couple of events coming up in the next couple of weeks. On Monday, the 13th, two North, two North students, along with myself, will be meeting as a part of the Academic Recognition Subcommittee. I would like to restate my position on the topic. In concurrence with the opinion of my fellow students, I believe there should be a different way in which you rank your students, which is not dependent purely on GPA. I am looking forward to Sirgance Committee and hope that we can find a way to rank students based on other factors, such as class rudder, strength of schedule, and possibly ACT scores. Also, within the next two weeks, two North students and I will be meeting with a couple administrators and discussing the future course catalog. I believe this will be a good way for students to provide input on the courses offered and have greater say in their education. I'd like to thank Mr. Schmidt for opening up both of the opportunities for students to increase their role in their learning.
Thank you very much, Ryan. I appreciate our student reps. And that takes us on to our school board committee reports. Catherine, you want to go first?
Yes, thank you. We had, on the 31st of October, we had a meeting of the Public Schools Foundation, and that was very interesting. Dr. Hardbeck and I both attended that. I'm ex-officio on that committee. And there are lots of good reports about the budget and what the giving that everyone has done, and awards were made to applications that were submitted by teachers for projects, field trips, et cetera. So, that was a very exciting report. And then, I was in Stevens Point to, for another meeting on Friday, and so, I stayed over on Saturday and went to a school board training session, so I'm your reporter tonight about that. It was a very good legislative advocacy conference, and WASBE was there in full force and offered some wonderful sessions. So, we were welcomed by Terry McCloskey, the WASBE president, and then, we had a session called Impact of Voucher Funding on Public Schools. That was, we got the, the talk from Brian Pankey, Assistant State Superintendent for Finance and Management from the Department of Public Instruction. He described student eligibility for the Milwaukee Parental Choice Program, the Racine Parental Choice Program, and the Wisconsin Parental Choice Program, which are three separate programs. In 1998 and 99, the courts ruled that religious schools were constitutionally allowed to receive vouchers. That's something I did not know, and I thought that was interesting. 2015 and 16, the caps came off the number of schools which could receive vouchers, and he also discussed independent charter school authorization. Mr. Pankey also spends most of his time managing voucher and charter schools. He has a staff of five or six people who help him with that. So, that's something I also did not know, that our tax dollars are going for administration for those schools and vouchers. Then, we had a wonderful session presented by Todd Barry, and I urge you to go and hear him speak when he comes to O'Clare, because I think you will hear pretty much what I heard on Saturday. And I'm going again, because there was so much information that he gave. He talked about current trends and future direction. He discussed the implications of declining enrollment in Wisconsin. He showed us several maps that showed where the population is growing and where it's not growing, and he spent quite a bit of time talking about the state budget at length. He said that the Transportation Fund and Medicaid are in direct competition with schools. Right now, schools this year are number one. Wisconsin's population map clearly shows that our state population follows the main highways that are across Wisconsin. So, northern Wisconsin has pretty low enrollment and less population. Then, we heard a session by Dan Ross Miller. He discussed school board advocacy and government relations, and I, you know me, so you know I learned a lot through this. He asked the question, "Why advocate? The state and federal governments can have a significant effect on your school district, so we must be involved." And relationships with the legislators are important, and cultivating that, which is something this board has done, has really paid off, I think. And he said the form of it, of having that relationship can be one, with one person or a committee, and he urged all the boards to do that. And I think we have been very active in that regard. Then, we had three panelists who were school board members from different communities, and they gave legislative advocacy tips and techniques from their districts. That was pretty good, but I think we could have done it too.
They didn't ask us, or we...
No, they, I know, I don't think they asked us. Then, we closed with a legislative panel, and that was led by State Senator Luther Olson, Chair of the Senate Education Committee. State Representative Joel Kitchens is the Vice Chair of the Assembly Education Committee. They both commented on how difficult and complicated our problems are in the state with regard to school funding. Difficult to be fair with declining enrollments and revenue limits. So, they were precise in a way, but another way, not. They kind of hemmed and hawed about the problems. So, they have established an education committee, which they said it was going to start after the budget was settled, but as you know, it wasn't settled till later in the summer. So, they're just starting now with this education committee, and they will be having listening sessions around the state of Wisconsin to talk about solutions to the problems we're facing with vouchers and budgets, et cetera. And the committee plans...
They're going to do it again.
They're doing it again. The committee plans to be ready with a plan in time for the next budget cycle, quote-unquote. So, we are urged to attend in person or write to the education committee to give our ideas. So, just thought you'd want to know. Thanks for sending me to that, that conference. And I have some materials that I'll give to Chris, things for you to read, and so, maybe you can pass that around to the board.
Thank you very much, Catherine. Now, Joe, you were there too, right?
I was there the day before for the Policy and Resolution...
Resolution, okay. Okay. So, committee...
You were introduced.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Anything from budget development?
We haven't met since the last full board meeting, but we will be meeting on Wednesday.
Okay.
And getting back on track now that the budget is approved with some other topics, including OPAP.
Thank you, Commissioner Harder. Demo transit's coming up to me too again here, right? Nothing tonight. Joint Commission shared, we have a, that LEAP Committee, I can say, Thursday, November 9, 6:30, the CISA 10 Board of Control is having their meeting at North Star, and we're sharing a little bit about our LEAP policy, our learning environments, and partner, partnership committee, and our innovation zones. So, that's exciting. Policy and Governance Committee report. Commissioner Luganville.
Yeah, we had a very productive meeting this morning. We discussed a new policy on online solicitations, so crowdfunding and crowdsourcing. So, a few tweaks were made, and an exhibit will be drafted with a list of pre-approved sites for staff to use, and that policy will be up at, I believe, our next possible meeting to discuss it. So, we also have currently working for our committee, two subcommittees that are doing some study work. So, one is going to be doing some work on the Academic Recognition Systems piece, and that's meeting soon, as Ryan mentioned. And then, the other is meeting later this week to discuss School Resource Officer job descriptions. So, we did discuss that policy at length today, and we're keeping on track with that. And also, I've been keeping track of the work of our committee and the work of our board, and the latest policy that we approved as a full board marks the 70th policy and resolution that has come through that committee just since I joined it, so even more before then. But I think that that really speaks to the hard work and commitment of, of the committee members, past and present, and Catherine and Carolyn Barsted, most recently on the committee, and the staff who put in so much behind-the-scenes work. So, I just wanted to express that appreciation. I brought treats this morning. I don't have any tonight, I'm sorry, but I just thought that was worth mentioning. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Luganville. That takes us to our legislative update, and you're speaking on the bill about the, yes? Legislative update?
Oh, yeah. Well, first, for my update, I have the proposed resolutions that have been approved for the delegate assembly that you can look at, and I'll just pass it down if you want to read through it. You can see kind of how our process was. They did approve ours, the final draft of it, and so, that's exciting. So, at the delegate assembly, I'll be presenting it, and then Catherine will be our delegate there to vote on.
And I did take copies of our voucher transparency bill to the conference, and those were put out on all the tables with the different delegates. So, people seemed to appreciate it, and it was mentioned several times that different ones are using it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, that was really great. And also, I have a couple updates with some...
Joe, can you just be a little specific, though, about the resolution? Just because people listening would not necessarily, can you just quickly...
Sure. We passed a resolution as a school board a few meetings ago now regarding voucher transparency. So, the School Board Association has, they're the statewide association that represents school districts across Wisconsin, and they have a resolution booklet, which has position statements on every issue you could probably think of. And what that does is it gives the, we have lobbyists and government affairs staff through the School Boards Association, who work with the governor and other folks at the Capitol to advocate on those issues. So, we passed a resolution that, so the School Board Association will be advocating for state property tax bills to include information, a line item there, about how much is personally deducted from a property owner as a result of the voucher program that we have. We have three voucher programs actually in the state. The Milwaukee Racine and the Parental Choice. And so, the, that's what the resolution is calling for. So, yeah. And then, the other, the other updates I have tonight are, the House, US House is discussing the tax, Possible Tax Cut Act, and there is one area of it that would impact teachers, so I just wanted to share that, so people are aware. As it's currently written, it would repeal the tax deduction currently available to teachers who use their personal funds to purchase instructional materials, classroom supplies, books, anything like that. So, and as you know, a lot of times, teachers do pay out of pocket for things like that. So, critics of eliminating that deduction are noting that just last year, some surveys found that a typical teacher spent an average of at least $600 of his or her own money throughout the entire year. So, that's just something to be aware of, and definitely email your congressman if you're interested in that. In the state right now, there's discussion about the permitless carry law. There's other laws I could go into, but I'll put them on the website. But this one is, I think, very important, because as it's currently written, and if it's passed, it will limit our ability to restrict guns on school grounds, particularly on, in parking lots. As, and as you know, if anyone who's been in, when there's a parking lot before or after school, it's a crazy time, there's a lot of commotion all over the place. So, this, this bill, the primary focus of this bill, and why its name is permitless carry, is to not, is to, to have permitless carry be legal in the state, not, not just concealed carry. So, you would no longer need a permit. So, that's something that the State School Board Association is monitoring, and they are very strongly opposing it, because it limits our ability to limit what's on school property. So, I'll keep you posted on that, and I'm, I'm thinking that we might, we might want to send a board letter or something, and maybe bring a draft of that to a future meeting to look over. And then, finally, I wanted to share a local legislative one with the city council. They're looking to increase bus fares for K-12 students and their budget, and some folks have expressed concerns about that. It would be up to $50 then for a semester, and for some people, that's expensive. And considering that UWEC students can ride the bus for free with a student ID, but school district students can't ride the bus for free with a student ID, it's kind of an interesting topic for a lot of parents, and I've heard from a few. So, I just thought it was worth mentioning tonight, and folks can contact city council members if they're interested in, in talking about that with them. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner Luganville. That takes us to the Consent Resolution Agenda. Board members can pull if items from the Consent Resolution Agenda, if you want additional information or want to make a comment. So, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 23, 2017. The minutes of special budget meeting, October 25, 2017. The Human Resources Employment Report. The Student Transit Contract. And the Memorial High School Secure Entrance.
You forgot to mention closed session minutes.
Oh, minutes of closed session, October 23, 2017. Can I have a motion, please?
I move approval for 7.2 through 7.7.
Commissioner Dux moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Harder, second. Can we take a roll call vote, please, Patty?
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Commissioner Boo?
Yes.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Thank you. That... Oh, you do? Dr. Hardbeck has an announcement. We usually do this then, but I wasn't aware, so thank you for poking me. Dr. Hardbeck.
So, with tonight's employment report, you approved the retirement of Tim Livam, and this marks his 25th year in the district. He is not with us tonight and may be absent from a few board meetings because of a family situation, but there will be a time when we will all talk about him, even though he will hate it, but we will talk about him. But I did want to announce that and to honor his retirement.
Yes, I honor it too. Thank you, Dr. Hardbeck. That takes us to our individual considered resolutions. Abby, you're going to walk us through authorizing temporary borrowing into the amount not to exceed 7 million pursuant section 67.128A Wisconsin statutes. Yeah, you'll explain, they'll get it.
I sure will.
Yep, thank you.
So, we do this once a year, and so, it's our, today was our day to work on cash flow. And so, what is cash flow borrowing? The district needs to borrow funds to pay our bills, and the funding comes in differently than when we need to pay our bills. Obviously, payroll and bills are pretty much a regular cyclical thing that happen every two to three weeks, depending on where we're at in the month. And our state aid comes four times a year, and our property tax payments come four times a year. When that happens, that doesn't, you know, we have those day-to-day, those week-to-week things that we need to make happen, and so, because of the timing of when we get our state aid and our property taxes, there's three times a year where we go really close to really needing money and actually go negative at some points, and so, that's why we have to cash flow borrow. One of the things that we do in O'Clare, which is different than what other school districts for, do, is that we borrow for the least amount of time as possible. We're very late in the season to cash flow borrow. Many schools do like a conglomerate and put together, and they're borrowing in September. And we don't do that, because obviously, we know the shorter time we need to borrow, then the less cost that there is to our district as far as interest goes. And so, we always have three low points in the year. November is always one, January and June, and that is just the timing of when we get the state aid payments compared to, or property tax payments compared to when we need to pay bills. November and December, it's usually a very short window that we're, that we need the cash for, and so, this one, it'll be less than four weeks, because we'll get a large state aid payment the middle of December. And so, but you, it's not predictable. We know when we're going to get our funding, but you can't, you know, make your bills work that same way. So, that's really the purpose of why we have to cash flow borrow. I just told you this, I just didn't realize I needed to flip my screen. And it always, our low point is always right before we're getting a state aid or a tax payment. And so, again, those four points, we can always pretty much guess which week in November it's going to hit and which week in January and June. I always like to share kind of what our projections were and where did we land. I always like to share kind of what our projections were and where did we land. And so this is our 16 to 17 projected. And so you can see the blue line was what we projected and when our low point would happen, which there... It's 52 weeks in the year, and so it's not by dates. But the deep drops are going to be your November, your January and your June. And so you can see that the actual line has that cash flow borrowing included in there. And so you can see that the peaks and valleys mirror very much as what we thought was going to happen, it's just that we stayed above zero instead of going below zero. I always like to review that after it happens to see how close were we in projecting when our bills were going to hit, because you don't really know for sure, and we take our budget and divide it out, so it's kind of fun to look at.
I liked this slide when I was going through it today.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It is. It's a fun one to look at, and you can see that we actually, as far as the peaks and valleys, we were pretty close to where we thought we would land. So that's always exciting from my end to see that. That means we did a pretty good job in our projections. So 17, 18, here's our projected. Obviously, the cash started out a little bit higher this year, and obviously some timing of when bills were paid and just some other things happening. But then you can kind of see, once you get into weeks 22 through 25, you've got those dips. And then, again, very similar to patterns that there were, except I think we just started off with a higher balance at the beginning of the year. So for our 17, 18 bids, we reached out to 17 potential bidders, and we received five different bids from three bidders. And so what that looks like is listed below. So we got a bid from Robert Baird, and they would take 3 million of the 7 million that we wanted to borrow at a net interest rate of 1.2638. Oppenheimer and Company said that they would finance the whole 7 million at a cost of 1.433. Baird came in with a second bid for the other $4 million, and that was at 1.4675. And then we did receive two bids from Merchants Bank, which is our bank of the district, and they split it into two lump sums, one at a 1.93% and one at a 2.03%. So when we get bids like this, we have some flexibility to reach back out to the bidders and say, hey, we would like you to finance only part of it because we like your rate. And so that's what we did this year. And so on our next slide, this is our recommendation to the board tonight, is that we would approve the Robert W. Baird 3 million at the 1.2638%, and then partially approve Oppenheimer. They bid on the full 7,000, but they're willing to finance and offer us three... I'm sorry, 4 million at that 1.433 rate. That allows us to, you know, save as much money as we can for the district. And so that's our recommendation. And is there any questions?
Seeing none, I guess. Do you have a question? Go ahead.
Well, it's not every day that you guys get to see people borrow $7 million. So that's some excitement for the school board meeting.
Yeah, you can come in for a budget. Abby, we'll do the whole budget for you someday. Seeing no questions, can...
That's two badges.
Yeah, yeah. Can I have a motion to...
No move.
So moved by Commissioner Luganbill, second by Commissioner Vu. Patty, would you roll call that amount of money, please? Thank you.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Duax?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Thank you. And I have papers for you to sign, so don't leave as soon as we're done.
We have to set agenda setting, too.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, individually considered resolutions are done. We will adjourn to committee reports and items for discussion, and we're going to start with the second part of our opening of school and equity report. And that's Jim Schmidt. Hi, Jim.
Good evening.
Jim, make sure you introduce yourself again and what your job is, because that's an important job.
Thank you, Chris. Jim Schmidt, I'm the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. Good evening, and we are back for part two. Part one, of course, was a presentation on who we are as a district, our demographics. And so we spent a long time at our last meeting going through that. And this one is focusing more on our results with our strategic plan work. Something to keep in mind as you look at this is when you look at achievement data, you have to remember you're on a journey. We are all on a journey with our students, and we have to look at data over a long period of time. So we see some fluctuations over time, but we're looking for overall trend patterns. And so it's... You'll see some things that go up this last year, you'll see some things go down, but we want to look at that long-term pattern. Dr. Hardbeck is often referred to the J-Cur trajectory, you know, where things... You might have a dip down before things improve, and so you'll see some of that in some of our data sets. One thing to keep in mind as well, though, is we are, as a district, still in the top third of the state in terms of our overall academic performance. And considering we're the eighth largest district in the state, it's really a challenge anytime you're in a large district to try to get that kind of movement, so it's something to be pretty excited about. In the end, as we start working, you'll hear over and over again a desire for high-quality instruction that allows our students to transfer their knowledge, skills and understandings to a variety of settings. And that transfer, you know, we often hear people talk about, are we just about test scores? Are we just about particular items? We are actually about transfer. We really want to have our students be able to transfer, whether it's to project-based learning, to whether it's about standardized testing or in-class tasks. We want them to be able to transfer that knowledge and skills to a variety of settings and utilize those skills, knowledge, skills and understandings in each one of those. So you're going to get a lot of where have we been? Where are we and where are we going and how are we going to get there? And so we will do that in terms of we'll start looking at our past, where we've been as we start moving into the present. So one of the pieces for us to consider always is to prepare all students to be college and career-ready. It's an objective on our strategic plan, as well as with the Department of Public Instruction. And it's really also about developing those foundational skills, especially those skills in mathematics and English language arts, because we know that that skill set is important to providing an equitable educational opportunity for all of our students. That if they don't have that baseline of skills... That baseline skill set, they're going to struggle to try to provide that transfer in a variety of different settings. So what we'll do right now is we'll take you back on a trip in looking over the past five years and talking about where we're going to, and all that's going to be on one slide, at least for the reading... The English language arts and reading data for the Wisconsin Student Assessment System or the WSAS. So one thing to keep in mind on this is that the instrument that we've been using at a state level has been changing. So you'll see a slight change in blue tone. This was WKCE year, this was Wisconsin Knowledge and Concepts exam these two years, then the Badger exam, which was part of the offshoot of the Smarter Balance Assessment, and then the two Ford exams. Keeping in mind that starting around here is when we first started really talking about alignment with the Common Core. But we've seen both from the state, and you won't see this fluctuation as much with the math data, but we have seen with the English language arts data is a bit of variability with the instrument. You're not going to see as much of that with the mathematics, both from the state and locally. So our current data is what you're seeing here, and then our goal for next year is really to try to get this number up to about 52%. Long-term goal, getting up to 80. You can't get there in one year, but we are looking... We do see a very slight trajectory upward. But again, we're in a... The instrument is... We're hoping that we're starting to see a pattern, but two points is pretty hard to be able to make a lot of judgment. You know, two points can make a line, but it doesn't necessarily make a trend that we're feeling really consistent about or feeling confident about. One thing to keep in mind, though, is that the state and the district have both seen similar growth patterns over the past few years. So even the ups and downs, that pattern looks the same, but consistently, the district scores above the state. Now, as we look at this data, we're going to drill down into our grade three data, and grade three is because that's one of those leading indicators of our preparation for post-secondary. And you'll see, again, we mirror the state in terms of the pattern, the shape, but yet we are ahead of the state in each one of those measures. So again, this is just grade three as opposed to three through eight, which was the last slide that you saw. And in addition to outperforming, you'll see that, again, that as we started to get more into the Common Core, this... Our differential above the state is actually just a little bit bigger than it was before. This was, again, from the left side of this. This is pre-C common core. So again, our current, and next year, again, aiming for 52% for growth here and then a stretch goal, and that's the long-term. We're going to talk a little bit about how you try to fill this gap soon. So, well, that'll be part of our conversation in case you are wondering that. Talk about risk ratios as well, and a risk... So our goal is to raise the achievement gap of all students and really to drill down and to look at different groups of students. We do focus on each student, but when you start to look at the impact of overall programming, you do start to look at groupings of students. And a risk ratio is one tool that gives us insights into those groups. And first of all, what the ratio represents is, if you have a ratio of two, it means you are two times as likely for this event to occur than the reference group. And the reference group, when you're talking about students of color, are white. The reference group of students with disabilities are students without disabilities. The reference group for economically disadvantaged are the non-economically disadvantaged. And the reference group for limited English proficient are those who are English proficient. So you're always referencing them off of the base group. And so if you have a ratio of three, you are three times as likely of that occurring. Big number is not something that we want to see. Big number in this case means the likelihood of not being proficient. So if you are 2.0, you are twice as likely to not be proficient as the base group or the reference group. So you can see when it comes to third grade reading, and we bolded the groups that are over 1.25, because the Department of Public Instruction and through the Wisconsin RTI Center has set one point above 1.25 as sort of the trigger to start to pay attention to. So that's why those have been bolded, and so we start to ask ourselves some questions about what is it that's creating an impact or that's causing... What are the conditions and classroom strategies that can affect the learning for those groups? You'll also notice a lack of some groups on here, and that's because their cell size is less than 10 students. So our Native American students are not on there, Pacific and the Hawaiian Islanders not on there because their group is less than 10 students. So we don't want to have them up there because then they would be... The possibility of being identified anytime your cell size gets that small. We're going to show you a similar pattern of data with mathematics. So again, looking at grades three through eight and looking at where we are now, and again, you'll notice, as I mentioned earlier, this has been a much more stable change of instruments in terms of scoring. You can see that WKCE, right before that was the last year, was one of the higher years, both for us and for the state. But we've been hovering right around that 50% and looking for this next year to have a goal of 53 with the stretch goal of 80. Again, we score above the state. This is a bold goal, long-term, and there are some strategies we think we can get there. It's going to take us some time, and we'll talk again on the second half of the presentation about how do we get there. Looking at just grade eight, and again, this, both the state and the Eau Claire district have a similar trend as well with eight, with grade eight. And again, this is the next benchmark, so looking at third grade reading, eighth grade math, and in a moment, we'll talk about 11th grade with the ACT. So again, our current data, looking at a goal for eighth grade math of 45%, this is lower than the overall goal for grades three through eight, which was in the 50s, and then that 80% stretch. Looking at our risk ratio data for mathematics, and again, that 1.25, you'll notice that our Hispanic students and our Black students are right on the upper edge of that 1.25 but have not exceeded. But it doesn't mean we're not paying attention to that, but it does get our attention. And really down in this group, you'll see all three of those. Now, something about limited English proficient student, both with the third grade reading and the math, but it's a bigger impact on third grade reading, is that once a student becomes proficient in English, they are then exited from the program. So it's kind of a... It's very difficult to have this group not show up here because the moment that you become English proficient, you are no longer in the program, and so you're not part of the data to bring that risk ratio back down.
Jim?
Yeah.
The economically disadvantaged, that's a mixed group.
Yeah, anyway, so you will have students in here represented more than once.
Thank you.
Yep. ACT composite, and then this is looking at the overall, and this is looking at the district, the state and national. We score significantly above the state. It's important to note, too, that when the Eau Claire school district was... We were in front of the state in having all of our students take the ACT. I mean, it was a self-selected exam for several years for students. We were a year ahead of the state by having all of our students take it, and now all states do take... Or all districts in the state do take it now. And then, this is a very difficult task to get a change in terms of your overall score as a district. Nationally, these numbers don't fluctuate by more than a tenth of a percent or so. Right now, our number, and this is pretty exciting, to climb from 21.4 to 21.7 is a pretty significant climb. Our goal is 21.8, and really, long-term, trying to get to 22, and if we get there, we're going to be pretty... I mean, that would be huge. But already, we're seeing some significant growth with more students taking it, which is pretty exciting. The risk ratio data, though, Asian, Black and Hispanic students all score significantly above that 1.25 as well as these groups down below. And so, again, this, we're going to get to about the... About how you get there, but some of the issues about how we can address this. But we're not also... So these are the three big indicators: third grade reading, eighth grade math, and then the ACT. And we're not allowed yet to share report card data, it's still embargoed. That'll be part of a future report, once that comes out. And we'll be able to dig deeper at that point also on those achievement gaps. But Dr. Hardbeck has also talked with us, with you, about possibly in a future work session, being able to dig even deeper into those achievement gaps and some of that data. And so we'd like to propose that or remind that that is a... I'm saying that she's brought it before. And really, have a chance at a different type of a venue to dig deeper into that data and have some of the teaching and learning directors here as well, too, that have some expertise in each of these areas to be able to help us drill down. So just something to... A little advertisement for the work session, so. So everything up until this point have been indicators that have been recognized nationally and at the state level. This is one of our own internal indicators we've created, and that's students with a post-secondary experience. And this is what intentionality will bring to you, and I apologize that this got cut off, but this is last year's data. But these are students with a post-secondary experience. And you can see that our current data, we are already climbing very rapidly. And again, a lot of attention's been put towards this, and we're seeing some benefit or some increase in that data. Looking next year to hopefully get that number, or the year that we're into, 72%, and then a stretch goal of 80%. This number is already baked in most for... Because the student schedules are set, but we're still working with principals about second semester and identifying students who still might be able to make that part of their schedule, and then make a long-term goal of 80% of students having that post-secondary experience.
Commissioner Harder?
Jim, could you just give some examples of these post-secondary...
Absolutely. Advanced placement courses, transcripter courses, especially with CVTC. You know, we have our academies that were doing some business academies and some family consumer sciences-type academies that students are taking. So those are all courses where they either earn delayed credit through like the advanced placement where they take the course, then try to earn a particular score on an assessment, or they're actually in a course that is duly certified between the two institutions such as CVTC and the district. And we're looking to actually increase a few in those areas, including one next year we're hoping to have as a dual-credit course in education. Dr. Hardbeck, teaching.
This data also includes students who successfully complete internships, work programs, and it also includes our Project Search students, who are special education students who are transitioning from school to work.
And life without limits from our special education as well. Thank you.
Jim, this also can somewhat indicate levels of engagement and connection to the
community, which totally translates into more interest in ACT and secondary education and all that sort of thing, too. So there's a big tie in there, right?
Yep. Each one of these actually requires a collaboration between us and another institution, and again, getting students to be connected to that as well. So advanced placement, obviously, is a relationship we have with the College Board, the CVTC and UW Eau Claire, ones are obviously with their institution. Project Search, obviously, with Mayo and the Project Search team and so forth. So absolutely. So one of those earlier presentations talking about partnerships, those are big... Those are embedded within this. Which then gets us into... You were... That was a very nice lead-in, by the way.
You're welcome.
You're welcome, thank you. About maintaining safe and supportive learning environments. So our first part was on that academic achievement, and looking at raising academic achievement of all students to close achievement gaps is one of the things we're discussing. But also, when we talked about academic achievement and risk ratios, there is another component to this, and that is nurturing the social and emotional development of all to this and that is nurturing the social and emotional development of all of our students. And this addresses again, the board's whole child approach, that safe, healthy, supported, challenged and engaged student and creating an environment that supports that. And so you've seen this before, Dr. Hardbeck, this is on our website, Dr. Hardbeck has used this in prior presentations. And one of the things, last summer, a team from the Teaching and Learning Department went to the National Center for Educational Statistics Annual Conference. And again, I was, we really went looking for those standardized social and emotional measures and we're not there yet. And I've seen in terms of a fully accepted set of benchmarks, and in some respects, some of the, read an educational Ed Week article recently that some in that community are not, don't want that either. They're still really trying to get that developed. And so it's not part of S.S. legislation yet, the Every Student Succeed Act. And so currently, we don't have a standard. So, but yet we are using some tools and trying to develop at least some categorization for the district, a lens for us to look at. And so some of our research has indicated that there are a few competencies that stand out and one is that social connectedness. The students with a strong social connection tend to be more engaged and have higher levels of achievement. And so looking at some measures that tie to social connectedness. Motivation, that having goals that leads to pursuit of achieving. If you're a Daniel Pink fan, of course, you'd be knowing that's one of the big threes in his areas as well. And then that self-regulation, that having effective study strategies, focusing your attention, sticking to goals over the long-term. And other things embedded underneath this, things that we start talking about when you start talking about the whole child citizenship, self-awareness and other social, emotional indicators are all fit within these three. And so as we work through some examples of our indicators, you're going to hear that some of them apply to just one of these and some apply to each of the three. But as a district and as an education community, we're all working towards a framework and some indicators, and we'll go through some of those now. So one is attendance. And our district data right now, you'll see current and then the goal, and you'll see that little drop at the end. And that drop is mostly at the 12th grade level and mostly with our McKinley students. And that's a little bit of trade-off because, you know, that's a different population that we have working and we work towards getting them to that six-year graduation rate. And so understanding that is important for us to understand that it's not, that sometimes you get those dips with certain groups of students. We also noticed though that if we disaggregate this, there are also more of our students of color. So you're going to hear again, as you look at some of those disaggregated data, we tend to see some things that draw our attention. So back to that work session and looking at that, that has our attention.
So are referrals to McKinley or the use of McKinley, has that increased as well?
I didn't see a difference in that. We just saw that one year, last year, there was a drop in that attendance rate there. And so we have to do some more digging on that, but that's part of why we think that that number is a little bit, is a bit lower. And it's mostly at the 12th grade level.
Thank you.
One of the things we're also looking at is that participation in fine arts. And this is really that social connectedness and motivation, those two areas. Likewise, attendance is being connected and being motivated to be there, to be at school and that, of course, we're fortunate at the middle school level, we have 100% because students are all scheduled into art at during sixth and seventh grade. They're all scheduled into music in their sixth grade. But we also see the, I mean, sorry, the elementary. And then at the middle school, the most of them are scheduled. So we, and again, this is a snapshot of just one year. This is not looking at an entire student's middle school career. So this 87.6 is all students sitting in our middle schools last year, just that one snapshot of the year. If we looked at students over the course of their entire middle school career, this would be at 100%. But even that being said, so students in eighth grade, for example, they have an elective opportunity, they all don't have to take a music, they all don't have to take art. But we still have that number well above that 80%. And finally, our high school number. And you'll notice that our current number is here and our goal is here, and I don't have a number for next year because this is again, a new indicator we're starting to look at. And we have to talk with our high school team about what would be some short-term goals because we have scheduling coming up in January and February. And so the communication that we have with students and some of those conversations about counseling are going to be some discussions we have in terms of setting a benchmark for next year.
Ryan?
Just one question. What, where are the trends over the four years, specifically North at least?
We actually don't have that, but we can get that to you.
Okay.
So we just started pulling this in the, as we're working on that framework, but we can get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
So would there be a correlation of the increase in the transcripted and the internships increase there, a decrease here?
I don't know. We'd have to check the data.
Okay.
Yep. So we can pull that for you.
Thank you.
You bet. Just got to make sure, actually, I noted it there, but I don't want to lose it.
Is, could I ask, is the line about middle school art and music, I know that music and art is, especially in sixth and seventh grade, it's required. So is this a combination of what I would assume would be the 100% plus whatever the involvement is?
Yeah, so this is a snapshot of all students last year at what they were taking last year.
Okay.
Their current enrollment. So in eighth grade, so-
So it's not broken down by grade?
Correct. So sixth and seventh should be at 100% because they're all taking, and then eighth grade would be less because of choice, and then a combination, that snapshot of the year. But we can also, this, just even pulling this is just like Ryan's question and even yours as well, what about the entire student experience over those three years? So we have some other data we think we can pull from this.
Yeah, I just, I just know like with that middle school line, it really doesn't do us any good to even the sixth or seventh because it's required.
Yep.
So we don't, I would just love to see the eighth grade and know that participation and how, if they are staying engaged or-
We can get that for you. All right. After-school activities, this is in 612, 58.2%. And again, this was, we don't have trend data on this at this point. We can, we are planning to go back and start to pull that. But again, it was a snapshot for us. And again, some of these, we have to have some conversations with our secondary principals to talk about how we can impact this number. And so we haven't had those conversations yet, but that's something that we plan to do going forward. And again, we know that if students are engaged in our programming, especially that 3 o'clock to 5 o'clock time period, we know is so important. It's just a piece of data that hasn't been on our radar as much as we probably should be and that's what we're going to be working towards.
Has this data been disaggregated?
Not yet, but we can.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
How much of that 58.2% is athletics and how much of it is clubs for after-school? Do you know that?
I don't, but we can get that for you too. This is, you're asking great questions.
Sorry.
No, no, this is one, no, I'm, yep, this is, these are all things we can get for you, absolutely. We can follow that up. You just keep, we'll write them down and we'll get them to you in a report.
Commissioner Beeka?
I want to just echo your question about disaggregating. This is something I've noticed anecdotally as a drop-off for students of color and that feeds into also awards that they could receive and so forth. So, and I don't know if you have awards coming, but-
We don't, not on this one. No, that was on, of course, the nondiscrimination report, but not tonight. Right.
Right. But I'm thinking of some, even some awards that were not represented in that, where the people I think are becoming disadvantaged because of that component.
And I think, by the way, I appreciate the questions and we will work on all those for you. And as you can tell, this is an area that, again, back to that standardization where your questions are helping shape that and I appreciate that, so thank you.
Well, and the athletic fees play into that too, I think, Lori, that we haven't studied those athletic fees like we promised to do, so we need to get working on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Duhax. You keep on that one. I depend on you for that.
I believe you've seen, no, actually, you've seen the next slide, not this one. But this is actually some of our post-secondary plans. And again, this gets back into that motivation, one of those three areas. And looking at what our, this is from the senior exit survey last year and where our students plan to go. And so this is those planning as they leave to go to a four-year institution, two-year institution, to get a applied skills degree and then an apprenticeship program. So really, before we get to military, this is 89% of our students. Another 2% are planning military and then 9% are either don't know or are landed in other. And one of the things that we'll be, we just resubmitted was our student tracker request, which actually gives us even more, this is where students say they're going to go, but that is being processed right now with the National Student Clearinghouse, which actually tells us where they did go.
That's cool. When do you ask this question?
This question was asked during the student engagement survey back in March. And so this was the seniors that-
In March, before they graduated?
Before they graduated, yep.
So are we able to find out the 59% that they said they want to go to college? What are the ACT look like?
We could, so what we'd have to do is we'd have to work with K-12 Insight and send data back to them to do that. That's just something that we could ask them. We could be, we could send a file and we could work that out. That's not something that, because we don't get the individual students, remember that whole deal about the survey data, how that stays on their end and we get the report back? But we've worked with them before to do some reverse engineering, so we can, we can ask that question. So you're asking what their ACT distribution?
Correct. For those that aim for higher education, if they're preparing themselves for it.
We could probably, yep, we can ask that. We've referred to this, I can't remember if we've shown you this slide before, but this is their areas of interest. So these are the 16 career clusters and we put a line underneath our, all of them that were at 10% or higher, double digits. This is our top five. So the top five areas, and again, this falls under that motivation, was health, science, STEM, the business, business arts, AV and communication, and then education. And again, this is the first time we've seen education show up in the top five for quite a while.
I was going to mention just to the board that that's also something that WASP is offering as a workshop, is growing our own. It's patterned a lot after what we've already talked about here in Eau Claire, so that's another one that's being offered.
So this falls under the PBIS data, looking at office discipline for girls, or you'll often hear the term ODR. And that is when there are minor infractions and there are major infractions. So the bigger stuff, if you will, and these are the ones that have been documented under the larger stuff. And so you'll see that our current data here is we've seen these decline over time. And so this is taken from the year-end report and this is per 100 students per year. And our goal is to decrease that four-year average and we're seeing that. If you think about it, PBIS came in the district in about 2009, so we're just beginning to develop our four-year averages and are seeing the goal is a decrease on each of those four-year averages. So we're seeing some positive data there. One of the challenges is that schools do, they do track sometimes differently within their sites because PBIS is a local implementation. But yeah, we're still seeing a consistent pattern over time, so this has been promising.
Can I comment on that though?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, ODRs can be a good thing because it really gives you information as to why a child is having difficulty. So I would think data of repeat ODRs or two or three or four ODRs per child would be more, you know, those, that would be the big, and how that decreases, not actually the number. Because to me, if you're trying to decrease the number of ODRs, then people aren't going to use them the way they were meant to be used in order for them to use it to discover what's really happening with that child.
So that is, that is a challenge with this, absolutely. So one of the things, we actually met with another, we've been, you'll hear later in the presentation about principals meeting with us to go over their school improvement plans. And that was actually one of the discussions we talked about was how do you set school improvement goals around ODRs? And do you want zero, and so do you look at how many, how many do you have zero, how many you have that are one and two, et cetera? This has been, and for the exact issue you're talking about, because you don't want to dissuade staff from documenting what's really happening.
Not at all.
Right. But at the same rate, we also want to see a decrease in incidence overall. And so there's that, there's that balance that you have to try to, because the goal is to actually have a more safe, secure and self-regulated group of students. And so one of the things we're noticing over time is in that implementation is, as a district, we're maturing in PBIS and having that data be more consistent. Because at the beginning, anytime you, back to the J-curve that Dr. Hardbeck has always refers to, we're getting now more into standardization of PBIS in the district. So some, a little bit more predictability. But again, like you bring up a valid point and that's one of the things we always want to talk, and you're going to see seclusion and restraint coming up as well. We don't want the number to go down solely because people are not reporting. We want the number to go down because of a change in the impact of our instruction with students. And so that's, those are the conversations that we have with our staff to ensure that that's not just because we're, you know, you're not bad by documenting what's happening.
Yeah, I would look to see a different way of keeping that data.
Yeah. Well, and again, so as I've been making notes, if you have other thoughts for-
Okay, thank you.
You bet. But point well taken. So, and you'll see that here again with seclusions and physical restraints. And we saw, if we, and one of the things we did look at is four-year averages, as I mentioned, and so our four-year average in seclusion, and again, this gets into self-regulation. Our four-year average in seclusion had a drop of 21.7, the average 21.7 over, from the year ending in 2016 to the year ending in 2016, it's 2017. So looking at, I'm going to give you a visual here. So looking at this and then just looking at the next four years, but there's a three-year overlap and we are seeing a drop as well in both seclusions and restraints. That being said, we also are having conversations, we just had this with principals last month and we're going to have again next month, making sure that we are all norming the same data collection. Do we all, like, what are all the things we call seclusion? What are all the events we call restraint? Are we all seeing that data the same way? Because we just don't want it to go down, we want it to actually be because of a different atmosphere in the school, if you will.
And can you tie it to the interventions that are used?
You mean the behavioral interventions? Yeah, and so one of the things then is to start disaggregating on, so some buildings have, for example, have used some title funds for behavioral interventionists and looking at some of those data pieces, so that's part of the conversation.
Or following the little ones that are starting with conscious discipline and what that looks like by third grade.
Consciousness, one's coming up in just a moment.
Thank you.
You're leading into each one of these very nicely. Suspension data as well, and we're seeing a slight drop. So we did have the suspension data pop up just a little bit, but again, plateaued and came back down. But looking at the four-year averages again, we are seeing a slight decrease as well in both in and out of school suspensions. So, and again, this one's a little bit different, obviously, in seclusion and restraint because you actually are having that, you know, the way, I mean, when the student ends up in there, they are, you know, they're either suspended or they're not.
Commissioner Beeka?
Yeah, so I was wondering for office referrals, restraint, seclusions and suspensions, if you could present it in terms of, use the same risk ratio approach that you take with math and reading?
Yeah, so you'd like to see a breakdown in terms of demographics, absolutely, we can do that.
Right. But I almost wondered too, so you said of the idea of you want, I understand the logic of, you know, you don't want these to be eliminated. However, when it's not, when it's a practice that's not supported empirically, what, why wouldn't we set a goal? Do we want to see, we want to see elimination of that practice? And I guess I would couple that probably with some qualitative data here. Because if you look, if you know the research just on suspensions, that white students get suspended for very different reasons than Black students on average. And so that, that's not something that we want to be doing as a practice. So the qualitative, you know, however you could combine quantitative with qualitative to really get into what's happening in these cases, that's what I, yeah.
So one of the challenges with total elimination is we know from, and again, back to the RTI Center from DPI, is that we know that our core program, both academically and behaviorally, will work for 80% of our students if we do it, if we do it as effectively as possible. It's when you have to start intervening with that, with the students that it doesn't. So often, we actually, while we would like it to go away, we don't expect the core universal program to always work for every student and that's where that intervention piece comes in. So we do anticipate still having a data set there. And that's where I talk, that's really what we're getting at, is that when you have a robust, solid program that everyone is consistently implementing, you'll see 80% of the students that are working, that's where you'll see that drop, but you may not see that elimination. If that makes, does that make sense?
Superintendent Hardbeck?
In addition to the risk ratio for suspensions, discipline data, you also want to look to see whether students of different races committing the same offense receive the same consequences. And that's probably the greater test of your equity, to see that there is no difference in the kinds of consequences that are awarded. And sometimes that is the challenge in terms of making sure that students are treated fairly.
Thank you. Commissioner Logan Bell?
I want to echo a lot of the sentiments that are being expressed. I really feel like, I mean, what we're talking about here in the first few slides is the achievement gap. And then we're getting down here and I think we're talking about the discipline gap. And we don't have a lot of the data here tonight, but I've seen other data points at different times. And I think that if you ignore the discipline gap, you're ignoring the achievement gap. And can we do more in our schools? Yes. And we should do more. But the fact of the matter is, we need, in my opinion, more than just the folks here in this room and in this building and that effort, we need the entire community to buy in. in. How we are treating people of color in our society and in this state, it impacts all systems and all communities, and our district is no exception. But, you know, we, we're talking about McKinley, we're talking about credit recovery, or we talk about, we want to, we want to work on the gap in terms of graduation, or we talk about, we want to help them get into post-secondary and things like that. But that's not where this problem starts. We need to talk about the early interventions that we need. And I really feel that we need to be thinking about what are the first steps that we need to take early with families? Peer-to-peer programs, minority scholars programs, mentorship programs. One of the challenges, because we've talked about this for the past few meetings, and I like to look up things and read articles, and you know what's kind of scary is you look for problems out there in Wisconsin that are evidence-informed, programs out there that are evidence-informed to address this in districts? There aren't a whole heck of a lot, which I think is pretty indicative of the problem itself. So I think that one of the first things that we need to do in this district is, is look at, looking outside of this building for the answers, frankly. So I mean, I, I really feel like one of the solutions will have to be the formation at some point of, of an equity review committee to look at this. I think that in terms of education for our students of color and that achievement gap, that's a difficult conversation to have. But I think that this board was forward-thinking enough to form that idea of an equity committee. It's in policy now for whenever we want to form a temporary committee to study something. And I think this could be a perfect opportunity to, to work with, to work with folks in the community, work with the university, work with parents, work with students. And I just feel like the longer that we don't form that group and that we don't do something, we're just going to, to keep pushing this. And, you know, as you all know, Wisconsin has the widest black-wide achievement gap in the United States for students. And that is a problem that doesn't, it isn't just in Milwaukee, it isn't just in Madison, it's in every city to own it. So I really feel that we need to have that conversation, especially in light of, of reports like this, that have that conversation about an equity committee and having that, having that work.
Superintendent Hardabek?
So as you were talking, I was thinking about some of the questions that are coming out about the data. And the purpose tonight is to give you an overview. We would like to have a work session where we go much deeper into this information. In terms of our equity work, we are working now with the state, and we're also working with the university in terms of our equity training. And so I think Jim used the word journey, and it is a bit of a journey right now. Part of our work as a superintendent board partnership is to identify some of the indicators that we want to dig deeper into and that we want to track over time to show progress or to show a lack of progress in terms of what we may have to do. I think that as we, as we look at these metrics, particularly about behavior, and digging deeper into the data, you, the deeper we dig, the more questions you're going to have. So we prefaced this part of the discussion with giving you the information that was in the disproportionality study, because that gives you some real detail that under, that supports what you're seeing tonight. And then as we work in our work sessions through the second semester, I think we'll be able to get in even deeper into this data and really discuss some of the strategies that we're using to see whether or not they're working or whether we need more. But I, I would just ask you to keep in mind our partnership with the university and, and some of the work that we're doing with DPI in terms of our equity work.
Yeah, and I, and I, I know there is work that's being done, and I've talked to folks about this, and every, no, there's nobody in the district who doesn't feel this is something that we need to work on right now.
And one of the other things that you, that you said, and I, I do think I have to kind of respond to this, is that the answers are not in this building. We know that. You know, that's why the school improvement process is so very important to informing this equity work, because of the people who are in the schools, working day-to-day, you know, working with the students, building those relationships, that's the work that informs the school improvement plans, which eventually comes up to the strategic plan and either moves the dis, the needle for the district in one way, in one direction or the other.
Thank you. Tim?
Yeah, I would just, I would just say, I, I know there's a lot of work that's being done. I just, I would like to see us bring other people as we dig deeper. I don't want us to be the only ones with the shovels. And I'd like to see some other people involved in that. Parents, potentially, other organizations in town, maybe students of color.
Yeah, and so, Joe, I would say that we're, we're in that process in terms of the work that we did in summer school with the other nonprofits in the community. We're also have been working with Alcentro, we've been working with the Mung Association. We've been talking about bringing groups of parents together that maybe are outside of our parent advisory group, to have some focus groups on the experiences of students of color and to see what families think is missing in terms of the district. So like I said, we're, it's a bit of a journey right now.
So with the, with the focus groups, what's kind of the thought with those in terms of, are you thinking second semester for those, or?
Commissioner Boo.
Since we're hot on this topic, I thought I want to add one more request. So during the focus group, if I may add, that we also asked you to present different strategy that are being in place or are being considered specifically to, to the, closing the gap, and also how you will achieve to the 80% in the two particular area, the fifth grade mathematics and also the post-secondary experience. Thank you.
So if you look back a year from when this presentation occurred, part two of the opening schools, it's a different look and feel to it, and we're, we're delving into a different dataset than we did back then.
It's very, it's very apparent.
It's very different. But clearly, I'm, I have a captive audience, so thank you for engaging in it. And we recognize that this is version 1.0, and the next one will even be more robust thanks to your input, so, so as we work along. And, and that, that deep dive, you know, doing the work session, I think would be really valuable for all of us.
I want to thank Michelle too, because I know that you are doing, I mean, every request that we're making for additional, that's...
It did occur to me, I was getting, the thank you was coming at the end, but yes, Michelle Rakke and Megan Hodicek, every time we, we bring up one of these, they look, and what's very exciting is that they love, they love, they love digging into this data too, because it can lead to positive outcomes for students. We talk about empirical data, and it's a good place for any discussion to begin. And so, so they've done an outstanding job pulling this together, and, and I'm sure she's making notes right along with me. So President Hamburg Boyle mentioned earlier conscious discipline, right? And so we look at some of our early learning eDECA data, or the DEVRO, Early Childhood Assessment. And really, this one across the board looks at all three areas, social connectedness, motivation, and self-regulation, especially that behavior concern. And the data here is the goal for that group is to be, it's, it's over 90% now, and I know when we talked with Heidi, the long-term goal is to get that down to, to get that, that orange bar. By the way, orange and blue are good, although over here you will not get blue because this is just a binary. They either are typical or need support, they don't have a strength area under behavioral concern. And so really looking at trying to get that with the next, next time through at 95%. So again, looking at some other indicators, and when, it was interesting discussion because each of these has a deeper story to tell, just like each dataset you've been talking about, as Heidi's explained this to, to the directors, there's a lot embedded into each one of these data pieces that warrants even deeper discussion, could incorporate disaggregation as well, looking at, at how different groups of students, and in this case, at the earliest part of their academic career with us. And again, also looking at the overall student engagement, you've seen this before as well, and having our current data, and we again see that this is grade five and then middle school, first half of high school and the second half of high school, and having that goal of three. We fall a little bit below that goal. Remember, this was that four-point scale, one to four, and so three being the goal, and, and we're pretty much there except for this particular group. And again, some of the things we're talking about, and some of the disaggregation you referred to in other areas, show up here as well. Right? So we talk about, back to that risk ratio about students showing up in more than one place. Likewise, to suspension data and the students scoring low engagement, yes, you'll see some of the same students scoring in both places.
Commissioner Harder?
Jim, could we go back a slide?
Absolutely.
The DECA, the DECA slides. This just puts me into the mind of, you were discussing at the beginning of this about the sort of the, working on clarifying the definition of whole child. And a lot of these points that we're seeing here, I think, came up, they certainly do for me anyway, and I think I remember that seeing them on that, that first slide, that opening slide, talking about things like self-control and, and initiative motivation, I think is the way you phrase it. But yeah. I wonder if, if some of these measures that are happening in the early learning levels have been considered for variations on these to be expanded to, to all levels?
We actually did ask, we worked with the research group Hanover Research and looked at this instrument moving beyond the early learning, and it does have limited strength beyond early learning. And so trying to find other equivalent measures right now has been part of our discussion.
Because you decided the DESA wasn't something that was worth using?
Right, well, and that was used, they found that they did it with all students versus students that were a screen that, that already came up in other measures. It really wasn't any more effective than using it for just students that showed up in other particular observations. But again, would we love an equivalent? So as we start talking about the future, and really trying to get all these gears working together, and again, this is back to our healthy, safe, supportive, engaging, challenging our whole child, is creating and sustaining systems. And as we've looked at the disproportionality data and recognizing, it was interesting because one of the things that might help tie together that idea of an equity team, as you mentioned, Commissioner Luganbill, is the idea of, we recognize that a multi-level system of support, and if you're looking at other states, they use the term multi-tier system of support. So if you're looking at literature, you'll either see MLSS or MTSS. And so there are things that are in place, but we also have a team at the teaching and learning directors that have been working with the state, that, you know, as the state has identified us, and we're working through, through, we're finding a parallel between what the state's asking and what we're recognizing as a district in terms of needing to support all of our schools and students in terms of systems. Because if we can clarify those systems for each school, it really helps ensure that we don't have students fall through, you know, anecdotal. We, we want to have something much more consistent and predictable for our students. So for example, one of those is high-quality instruction, and we talked many different times, all the way back to June, about the literacy within supportive learning environments. And the emphasis this year is on writing. And if we think about the English Language Arts curriculum, there's a, there's coming in in terms of reading and, and listening versus expressing, which is our written and speaking. And so the focus this year is on writing and having that opportunity for it to be, you know, we, we know in mathematics, and we also know in English Language Arts, the more that we get students talking and expressing and writing, they become much more empowered in their work, much more engaged in their work. And so, again, trying to get them into that type of work, and again, to be able to transfer that knowledge and skills over multiple areas. So this isn't just in English classes or reading classes, it's also in the disciplinary subjects as well. And so really trying to do that high-quality instruction, we've been talking about guaranteed and viable curriculum, making sure that every stu, what every student gets. But very importantly, and we're, this can be reemphasized again this, this two weeks from tomorrow on, the next round of, of support for our staff on this, is those equitable classroom practices. And really having our staff look at, they've already done a self-assessment on equitable classroom practices, but really looking at those practices and beginning to make inroads on a change in practice personally, at the classroom level, to impact, positively impact our students. This is a difficult thing, as we talk about some of these things that you were just referring to earlier, the things that we do day-to-day instruction have become habits for us. And to change those habits, you have to have a compelling reason for teachers to change what they do day in and day out. Just, I always talk about working with a consultant where he had people just change their watch or their ring from one arm to the other, you know, and how difficult that is, and that's just the changing of where you hold a piece of jewelry. Asking someone to change their instruction is much more challenging, and that's the work in front of us, because it's one thing to do something very structural, like, you know, what I post or what I, but it's very different in belief system and how we work with our students. So that's some of the, the significant work that's going on.
Can I, because of the high-quality instruction? So when you talk about a guaranteed and viable curriculum, is that the same as meeting the needs of all kids?
So guaranteed and viable curriculum are the outcomes that we are after, but the instructional strategies to support individual students may be different based on your student. So that's what you get at the meeting of the needs of all children. I'm glad you bring that up, because it's one of those things, we, we heard terms about, we all, you know, day by day, we all step together and do the next lesson, and it, it's much more flexible than that, but understanding where you want to get to. So, and then having a myriad of instructional strategies and supports to help students get there.
And that's tied to growth?
Yes.
So, so the conversation is, what is the appropriate amount of growth given, I mean, truly, right?
And growth is a challenge, you know, we talked actually quite a bit about growth when we started preparing for this presentation, because the growth of someone much lower in terms of their skill set and someone much higher is different, right? And so to say we expect every student to grow by X amount is, is, is very difficult as well. It is, and so you are, you start looking at each individual student.
Thank you.
You bet. Some other pieces under the high-quality instruction though are the PBIS, the Positive Behavioral Intervention and Support, and again, that is creating, and PBIS is founded actually on supporting an environment that supports academics and creates a culturally responsive environment in your classroom. And so having, continuing to evolve that framework, we continue to work, we continue to have tier-one and tier-two trainings, and, and we have that one building at Robbins that's a tier-three, and really continuing to train those staff and the leaders in those buildings to then work with their staff. Other pieces in high-quality instruction also involve non-violent crisis intervention, back to that behavioral piece, and having de-escalation strategies, because we know if we escalate a student, they're not in their executive functioning, and so they're not in a place where they can learn. And again, incorporating those culturally responsive practices, not just in, in the English Language Arts curriculum, but across all curricular areas. And so really focusing on that skill set that teachers have, and again, changing day-to-day practices, which is not easy, but, but it's bigger than just, obviously, the writing piece is a big one right now, but it's also, it also goes into other areas as well. And then also, we're looking as a district to redefine coaching. We have coaches in the district, we want to redefine the idea of what a coach does, and this is going to take us a while to get there, but also so that a coach can help support our staff in, in terms of being more effective at the universal level, and trying to get that 80%, because when you're not effective at the universal level, you have a lot of intervention needs. When you have a lot of intervention needs, you're really scrambling, and you really want to try to shore up as much as you can to support all students as much as possible, and then start kicking intervention on a smaller number of students. But you can do that if you have a, if you have a good repertoire of skills and supports at the classroom level. Second piece on here is collaboration. And we've talked, in addition to collaboration with our teacher teams, but also we've been working very closely with the teaching and learning, with principals reviewing school improvement plans, and really digging in deep about what's embedded in those plans. And many of the things you're talking about here, we're talking about as well, that they've looked at data in a particular way in the past, but then starting to ask those questions when they look at their student engagement data, when they look at their literacy data, about digging down into those, some of those risk ratios for, for students beyond, beyond what just appears. So we say we want 73% of all students to be at this level. What about, does that, that means 27% or not, if you say 73%? And who are those 27%? And are they, are they clustered in a particular demographic, special education, limited English proficiency, et cetera? And so really having a lot of discussions with principals about those and helping them develop some systems to monitor progress on their school improvement plans. So we often look at school improvement planning as check-ins at the beginning of the year, end of the year, but looking at how we can support that throughout the year to try to make an impact in the classroom as, as their school year goes on. It's also building leadership teams with collaboration, and some of the things that I made note of here is ident, you know, that they do identifying students at risk, monitoring student progress, intervening, some of the things that President Hamburg Boyle was talking about, and adjusting the intensity and nature of an intervention based on student needs. So really, again, guaranteed and viable curriculum means where we're trying to get to, but all these things that leadership teams talk about, a lot for that, addressing to, but all these things that leadership teams talk about will offer that, addressing each individual child with where they're at. And in addition to this, we also have things in the district like building improvement committees, we look at the staff engagement survey and the focus groups and learning more from our staff, which starts tomorrow, 8:00 AM, we're pretty excited. And then some of our content area work groups, and the content area that, as you heard about one that we sent to you in a memo last week about physical education as an example. So a lot of pieces going on. Having a balanced assessment system and looking at exactly the type of things you're talking about, and not just the assessments we have, but looking at those assessments in different ways, so that we can intervene for all students. But we also have put in place this year an RTI module, Response to Intervention. It's a piece, it's a, it's a module that connects to our student information system, Skyward. And what that does is it matches student interventions with the deficits that they're using, that they have, that a student has. And this, the buildings that have begun to work with this this year have had this aha moment, that until they actually started using this module, they realized that there was a mismatch in the past between intervention and the student need. And so we're finding that some of the tools that we're rolling out, like an RTI module, are being, we're getting a lot of positive responses from buildings about how it's able to help their staff identify how to best intervene with students. We also have a data warehouse, and this gets back to that little look on Michelle Racky and Megan Horscheck's size, when we say, can we get that? It's really leveraging that system. But they've also taken that system and turned around and made it useful at the classroom level. We first rolled out a data warehouse, and again, the data warehouse, if you think about it, is not just for data assist, but where it can crunch and provide reports, and look at, and look at things in a way we hadn't looked at before. We now have a window into that at the classroom level as well, and they've been working at each of our buildings to help staff so that they can pull up data on their students to be much, rather than waiting till the end of the year, end of a quarter, end of a grading period, to be able to see where their students are at. And I think one of the things that's most exciting about their work with the data warehouse is they have tied, so we showed you a lot of data earlier about state assessments and national assessments like the ACT, but one of the things they've been able to do is use local assessments from Skyward that the staff will enter into a grade, and then have, if our staff use, in Skyward, when you, in the gradebook, when you put a particular event in, if they all clone it, each, so we can use basically a local assessment and have that feed our data warehouse. So not just state and national data, but local data, which is immediate in that they're using, and so as they enter their grades, they get data for their classroom, and they can see it in relation to the building and the district as a whole. And it's very powerful stuff, because we often hear people, you know, say, well, that's great, we do the Ford exam once a year, but we do the math unit assessment throughout the year, different units. And that has been a wonderful tool to allow our staff to have timely data that they didn't use to have before. And then finally, the last note I have is growth. And really looking at some growth models, and this isn't an easy nut to crack, growth data is pretty tough to be able to, you know, some of the models, the student growth percentiles that we see that come out of Department of Public Instruction, some of our vendor-based tools like the STAR assessment, are difficult to replicate, and we're looking for different ways that we can look at growth data, because if we do it, we want to make sure we're doing it right, because if we're not doing it right, we can make some judgments that are not, that are not very sound. And finally, the last piece is the culturally responsive practices that we've been laying over the top, and, and again, as we look at the model, and this is DPI's model, these are these, each of these areas, but then that culturally responsive practices that lays over the top, and understanding beliefs and practices, and how beliefs and practices are students may be different than ours, as we are instructors, and how we can support students when, when there's a mismatch. And the mismatch is not a bad thing. So we have, one of the things we're going to lead you with is when we start talking about all students, and there's a, we're going to show you a little video, because this, this person is much more entertaining and, and on point even than, than what you're hearing from me. But we have high academic expectations for all of our students, but we use this word "all." The video you're going to see is really, does a nice job of trying to capture what we mean by "all," because at the end of the day, this is the type of, this video is going to be shared with our staff when they meet in a couple of weeks. And it's a pretty interesting definition when we start getting, some of the conversation you were talking about earlier, and Patty, I hope the audio is at the right volume level right now, so. I'm going to. Okay.
I think everything's driven by why. Like, why drives everything in your life, your personal life, your professional life, whether you know it or not, consciously or subconsciously, I'm telling you, everything's driven by a compelling why. Why drives everything? Why decides whether you stick with an initiative or bail out? Why drives whether you stick with your fitness plan or bail out? Why drives everything? If you've got a compelling enough why, that's why real good goal setting, it's not about the dollar amount you want to make, it's what it can do for you. See, it's not about the money you make or the next, the next ambition you have, it's about what it will allow you to do in your life. That's what gets you out of bed. That's what allows you to get uncomfortable. Everything we want in our lives sits right outside our comfort zone. And so is our compelling why clear in schools? See, we talk about, we believe all kids learn at high levels, but the fact is, we got bars for different kids. We got a bar for these kids and a bar for those kids. We got a bar for the kids on this side of town, we got a bar for the kids on this side of town. We got a bar for the kids whose parents make this kind of money. We got a bar for the poor white kids, the poor black kids, the poor brown kids. We got a bar for the kids who don't speak the King's English when they walk into our All means all, but like, but like high levels of learning, I want to remove the ambiguity of the word "all." So here's what "all" means. Any student expected to be a financially independent, productive member of our society is all. Any student expected to be a financially independent, productive member of our society is all. There's a tiny percentage, I mean, a tiny percentage of kids, a tiny percentage of kids who would need assistance for the rest of their lives, and they too have goals. But when I say "all," I'm talking about all. All. All of them. Anyone expected to pay rent, hold down a job, use an ATM card is all. All of them. Even when you're thinking about, when I say "all of them," him too.
Any other questions?
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Harder?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like you guys are developing some new indicators for the area of social and emotional growth, some things I don't remember seeing before.
Correct.
I'm really excited to see that, and also what you talked about, which is an attempt to define and refine the definition of whole child.
Right.
I would just really be doubly encouraged to see that effort, if it can involve some attempt to get explicit board buy-in on what those definitions are and what those indicators are. This is a great start, seeing, seeing this and, and seeing these enhancements to how we measure social, emotional is a great start. So thanks.
Commissioner Vu?
I want to say something similar too, and especially when it comes to expectations. As board members, I believe it's okay for all of us to emphasize the strong need for staff to understand and to, to see the value of expectation, especially expectation that educator can be held accountable for the bar that the district set. So a bar that is set should be a shared value in the district, not just administration or not just board, but everybody who are educators, especially begin with the building leaders. If the expectation is held high for accountability for improvement, I believe we might, that in itself is a tool to meet the benchmark to the next level. So my point is, I just want to echo that expectation of educator being held accountable to achieve the high bar is, need to be emphasized after, time after time.
Thank you.
I may add that too, that educators held responsible, given the resources to, to do the job. And that's where we can come in and be advocates for school funding and, and a lot of things that augment or help that. Oh, Commissioner Dwyx?
Sometimes I think people don't realize they have different standards for different people. And I, I like the "all." And I know that because I came from a different state, and they don't have, they don't use the word "all."
Seeing none, thanks, Jim, very much. Thanks, Michelle, thanks for everybody who, all of you out there, because you all help in, in ways that we are very grateful for. Thank you. That takes us on to the review and discuss the School Board Handbook. Now, I think I'm going to do this a little bit differently. This is kind of a, a goal of mine to get a handbook together, since in the four and a half years I've been on the board, we've had four changes in board members, not including normal progression through terms of office. So there used to be a handbook years ago, Patty's got all that information, we've been working on a handbook. So I wanted to discuss from the board, or for some input from you tonight on the handbook. Does it need to be lengthy? If you have something to add, could you, or changes or things, could you just kind of quickly maybe list it or give some input? And then I would like you to submit that to me or Patty, right, to Patty maybe, because she's got the document. And then we'll work on getting that infused within the handbook, and then we'll bring it back as a draft, and get that done maybe before Christmas time. Okay? Does that sound okay? So then we won't be spending an hour on going through page by page, I just don't think that's going to work tonight. So I, I'm going to start a little bit, just quickly, to say that I have lots of things relative to the handbook that I may want to make more specific, in the sense of, we have policies in there relative to board jobs and elected, you know, as president, vice president, whatever, but they're not specific, it just says according to state law and whatever. And I think for new members on and off the board, and when they get new offices within the board, I think maybe we could add some links on, from WASB within there, that would maybe be more explicit about what those jobs are. We can update it as we go. There are other things too, as we get into policy, into our governance, as we work with that, as a board that I think we can add as well, so it'll stay a draft in December until we finish the governance work we're going to do in our work sessions, and then that will overlay in there as well. So I think that's, I have a whole long list here that I'm going to infuse in there. So does anybody else want to, Commissioner Luganville, and we'll just go kind of down the road?
Well, first I'd just say thank you to the three of you and Patty for, for all of your work on, on putting together the handbook. So the, I only have three things, that I read through all of it, and I really liked it, and I just had three things that I caught that I thought I'd maybe just bring up. For, I'll just go in order, so one is on page 14, and it's, talks in there about the discipling of school board members, and all of that makes sense, except for the part about how board members could initiate a recall election acting as individuals, and I understand that language maybe came from our attorney or whatever. I just, when looking at that, I just thought that was very strange, because that isn't a function of the board to do that. So certainly that is any individual citizen's prerogative to recall any elected official, but it's not a function of, of us as, as a collective of board members. So I thought that paragraph about recall should probably be not in there. That was just my thought with that one. And then I only had two other ones on page 16, the one about school board correspondence procedures. I know that the contract that we have with the superintendent stipulates that any complaints or concerns are forwarded, but this states that all correspondence is referred to the superintendent. So I just wondered if that was a typo, or if that is what the direction you want to go in. I just know, when I thought about that logistically, I thought, I don't think any superintendent would want every sort of, every correspondence sent to them. So that was one I just had a question about, I guess. And then the other one was the piece about individual board members shall not make requests for, and then it had the list printing, all of that kind of thing. That leaves out the function of board members serving in a committee capacity. So an example being, as the chair of policy governance, I've asked things of the, the board secretary to print things or, or whatever, that I wouldn't ask as a member of a board of seven, but I ask it as the chair of that committee, but there's nowhere in here where it talks about that that's permissible to do it through your committee capacity. So it was just those three things that I, that I saw.
Anyone else? Commissioner Vu? I can't, I always see your light, because your computers are, so I can see it now. So Commissioner Vu, I'm so sorry.
It's okay. I know in the key works, it's, has a section where it gives example of what role a superintendent is to play, and what role does a school board plays, or the school board play.
You like that explanation?
I think we need to have something like that in the handbook, or make a reference that we follow that expectation, which is in the key works. Especially for new members, I think they need to be able to know what role they fit in.
Thank you, good.
Commissioner Harder?
Well, on that point, I guess I just noticed there are two somewhat, in my view, oppositional governance models outlined here, one page after another, I think intentionally. I mean, I know it's not a mistake.
They're placeholders as we flesh it up.
Exactly. But I think, yeah, whether it's key works or coherence government or something else, we, we should just make sure it's one. Obviously.
I, I think the conversation, though, for the handbook was the overall philosophy and, and how key work words things, and Charles just alluded to that, is powerful. So, and especially the piece we put in there. So we're wondering if we can't, I think we're going to head, end up with something hybrid, and that was why they're both in there. So ultimately, when they come back, we can make that decision, but we're just not there yet.
Yeah, definitely.
Does that make sense?
Absolutely. I think, though, in particular, the, those, I guess those lines that Charles is talking about, which I totally agree, it's good to have those lines clear, but I think they're different between these two, right? So, yeah.
Yeah, it's a little schizophrenic, yeah, the handbook, yeah. Thanks. Commissioner Dwyx?
On page nine, paragraph three, "The president shall countersign all orders drawn for payment of teachers and other employees." Is that true?
I think it's the signature that goes on forever, right? I mean, I, the, I don't sign, they take my signature. Mm-hmm. So Commissioner Luganville?
I had one other one that I forgot to bring up, that I, I had written it down months before this conversation, because I knew we needed to have it somewhere, but about school board member social media, and the, and with some of the state laws, how to best use it. So I have the text that I'll send to you, Chris.
Good.
And it's basically the disclaimers you have to put on a page, and then also that if you, after serving on the school board, are done, once you're done on the school board, you have to do one of two things with any, like, school board page. You have to either archive the entire thing in a file and provide it to the district or whatever, should they ever need it, or you have to keep it up online for seven years at least. So those are just some open readings, but I'll send those to you, so I think those should probably go in there.
Yep, they should go, yep. Good. Anything else? Anything else? Go ahead. Commissioner Vu?
I'm just thinking out loud that maybe checklist might be necessary to have. I'm not sure if it needs to be in the handbook, but the handbook should be consistent. In other words, we need to have a checklist for new member. Once they're on board, what are the first thing they do, second, and third, and fourth?
I had, on my list was, Dr. Hardebek does a really nice orientation with new board members, and I think that the information that is provided at that time should be part of that checklist.
So can we expect that the new member will get the checklist from the superintendent and make, make that as part of?
Yeah, we'll discuss. Yeah, we'll discuss that and see where that fits, because that's, Marianne's got some really nice things that she goes through with new board members, and it was helpful, you know, helpful, yeah. Okay? That's a good idea. Thank you. Anyone else? So what you have to promise me is, we've gotten that in the notes now tonight. If anything comes up, you need to get it to us, and then we're going to embed that from this discussion tonight into the handbook, and hopefully do that within the next month or so, okay? Thank you so very much. Moving on, it takes us to work sessions and summer meeting schedule, and I'm going to give that to Dr. Hardabek, because she does this really well. And I had this discussion whether she knew right what to do, so, Dr. Hardabek?
Okay, so you have talked as a board about designating one meeting a month as a business meeting and one meeting a month as a work session. Typically, we would have the first meeting be a regular business meeting, and the second meeting would be the work session.
Because the first meeting is when we have to do the budget business for the district.
Typically.
Yep.
And even if we have a work session, though, you can always do consent agenda and, you know, any business things that you do as you open your meeting. But you would have your first part, and then you would adjourn to your work session. So that proposal has been put forward, and I would say that agenda setting, or you would convene a committee of the board to set up a schedule for those work sessions for the second semester, starting with the second meeting in January. Summertime is always an interesting time, because people travel, and some people travel for an extended period. There's also a time toward the end of June when your staff is trying to use the vacation that they haven't used. So it's sometimes problematic for us to get all of the business things done that you would like to do. So what we're proposing is that we have one meeting in June, that would be June 4th this year, it would be the first meeting in June, and the, we would have one meeting in July. And the meeting in July would be at the end of July, most likely July 23rd, which would give us two weeks before the first meeting in August, which would be August 6th. Now, you could extend it to July 30th and have, you know, a meeting at the end of July, and then go right into August and have another meeting. So that would be up to the board to decide what would work. But it would provide some flexibility for travel, and people, you know, if they did have to miss a meeting, they would be missing one meeting instead of two or three.
Discussion by the board? Commissioner Hurd.
Well, I know I'm one of the culprits for the extended travel in the summer. But I can say that the July 23rd meeting is a little later than normally we would take our travel, but I would be glad to stay behind an extra week or so to do that 23rd meeting. Pushing it up to the 30th would be more of a stretch, but if other people, it works much, much better for them. I could even go as far as the 30th. I prefer the 23rd, but I'm flexible.
Thank you. Do we have that? Because when people throw dates at me, I just, I'm always, I just don't go anywhere. So, you know, I don't usually figure that out that way, so.
Gives about six or seven weeks for travel. And then, you know, I think the thing you might want to keep in mind, Commissioner Hurd, is that there's no requirement that you would have to attend the July 23rd meeting. It would be, you're missing one meeting instead of missing many meetings.
I would almost certainly miss the August meeting, is the thing. And it would allow me to join for the July meeting, then only miss one. That would be the August.
I see, okay.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? Discussion? Seeing none, I'm, what's her name? We can bring it back to consent agenda with the dates and what was just discussed tonight, and then we'll pass it within the consent agenda, and it'll be done with. Does that sound good? Everybody okay with that? Okay, the next discussion and possible first reading of policy 825, distribution of non-school related materials. Do you want to introduce this at all?
It's pretty straightforward, and it's just updating our policy on it to reflect the new site that we have on the district page, which is a replacement of the flyers in the school folders that used to take place.
So we need to read this. Do we want to start, Joe, and pass it down the line, or you'd want to just read it?
Sure.
Thanks.
"The purpose of sharing materials from non-school sources is to provide information to families about community resources, programs, and activities for school-aged students and families. The Eau Claire Area School District shall share such information for school-age students," period, I guess. "School partnership coordinators play an important role in communicating this information. As a service to the community, the ECASD provides electronic flyers on its website for outside community activities and services that may be of interest to students slash parents in the ECASD. The inclusion of a flyer on the website does not in any way, shape, or form constitute an endorsement by the ECASD, including its school board administrators and staff of that activity, or any views or facts expressed by or through that activity, or otherwise imply any association of that activity with the ECASD. This policy does not apply to district sanctioned student activities, PTA, PTO activities, and booster club activities. The superintendent shall designate a process to screen materials according to the following criteria: consistent with law, suitable for student cognitive, emotional, physical, and social development, not disrupt the school environment or inhibit the operation of any school, not promote tobacco, alcohol, drugs, or weapons, not vulgar, offensive, sexual, or obscene. Groups that use the sharing process shall follow the administrative rules, which shall be reviewed by the school board prior to any changes. The display of school-specific community information on school premises shall not constitute the endorsement or approval of the organization or activity."
Any discussion, questions? Ready to move it forward? It will so happen, then, thank you. That last part on there, as far as this display, that's where a lot of the flyers can be put out during parent-teacher conferences and whatever, but it does not mean that we are endorsing all that. It gives, it gives the community groups another opportunity to get their information out there. I just want to say that. Commissioner Duex.
Yes, we worked on this a long time ago, for a very long time, and we were dealing with paper, not electronic things. So I'm very excited that you have put this idea forward.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing none, it takes us to the request for future agenda items. Seeing none, I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Vu, second by Commissioner Duex. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.